All right, thank you. I'll call to order the Rockport Select Board meeting of Monday, January tenth. Due to our current posture, we are meeting Zoom. I have accounted for your attendance this evening. So we will call the meeting to order. The first thing we have up is the Town Managers' Report. John?
Yes, so the first thing I want to add, and it's not in the report, but since I have the power of Zoom, which feels so powerful, let me do this right here. I want to share from the screen. We have an award winner with us once again, Megan, and putting together our budget, last year's budget, obviously where she's going to win again this year. But she won the, once again, the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Financial Officers Association. I mean, this is, I don't know if this is like a three-peat, this is like the Chicago Bulls just winning championship after championship.
The Lakers.
The Laker, well, I'm a Celtics fan. I don't know if I can, but you're right. It's tough, it's tough. But no, I mean, it's truly gratifying to work at a place where people succeed and excel at things that they put their time and passions into. Budgets are probably the least favorite thing for anybody who's ever worked on them. And so it's understandable that we, in many places, you just try to do it to get by. But Megan takes that in, like many things she does, she goes to the wall and does them with amazing, amazing, gracefulst and unbelievable attention to detail. And so congratulations, Megan. And we, we, well done, well done, as always. I mean, it's just kind of old hat at this point. But the parade, the parade will be, we'll bring you home from, Jason and Randy will meet you out.
We'll all honk and flash the lights.
I know, there should be something on Zoom where we can like put a crown on your head or something.
But certainly, great job, Megan. I think that going through the process, I think only once now, maybe twice. But it's, you make it, you make it easy. I know that there's a lot that goes into those 12-pound binders that you put together, but it's a lot of work, but appreciate your efforts. So congratulations.
She's waving to Peter, saying he's leaving. So in less exciting news, we obviously have had a big uptick in COVID cases locally. My, the high school, we just got a letter from the parents, as a parent of a high school student. They have thirty students who tested positive today or over the weekend. That's about just short of five percent of the school population. The basketball program is shut down for a week, so that's a big, big deal in my, in my household. But that's just, just one piece of the puzzle that we're seeing all around our community, which is, it's here. And it's, it's something we need to be cautious of. I wrote in the report about what we had discussed, kind of informally, there were some emails bouncing around about remote participation. And before the Christmas holiday, I wrote an email to all the department heads to share with the committees to say, this is a great time to use this venue of Zoom. This is why we have the remote participation policy for emergencies such as this. And gratified that so many are taking those steps right now. Since I wrote this, and this is, again, in a COVID world, things happen fast. So the main CDC adopted the US CDC updates of a five-day isolation. And so we are also following in kind with our, our employees. So we've updated those protocols for everyone, and I sent that out over the weekend. You know, we are continuing to mask in the office, and we're trying to do the best we can, trying to limit number of people coming in to meet with individuals and the like. But, you know, obviously, we're a public building, and we have to be welcoming as best we can. So we just have to do it, you know, from, with our eyes showing, showing kind eyes and kindness on the phone and writing emails and just try to be as attentive as we can be. So I really appreciate all the staff who are trying to do their best in the face of those challenges. And so we're working ahead on that. In terms of the rest of my report, obviously, the budget is on the, is the next on the docket. Once we finish this meeting, I have some department head reviews to do over the next week and a half. And then it's headlong into the budget process. You know, Megan is completing the audit work this week on the FY21 audit, but it will be budget, budget, budget until we get through February. So plenty to look forward there. Just the highlights, obviously, Holiday on the Harbor was a huge, huge success. I saw Denise down there, that was fun. Really couldn't see anybody, so if you didn't grab me, Denise, I probably wouldn't have seen you, but thank goodness, it's good to see you there. Amazing night, thirty-five degrees, fog to beat the band. I mean, I was really concerned as I was leaving the house, I'm like, I can't really see too far in front of me. But it was a great night, great turnout, everyone had a great time. And so there's been some word that perhaps Holiday on the Harbor moves to the New Year's Eve holiday. So more to come on that.
Luminary is really nice, too. I don't know who put those out, but all the, is that Public Works, somebody said?
Public Works, yeah, Public Works came in and they filled, and the beautiful part, we've had volunteers in the past, but our guys are so quick, like boom, 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 it was, it was done in no time. And, you know, usually go up Pascal Avenue and, you know, they have the Core Strong Carriage, but really tried to keep it tight around the harbor. It was really, really cool. You know, coming across the footbridge, you know, by Goose River, and it was a lot of fun. So that was, that was the first year that I had actually had a chance to go. So it was really fun. I got to do the whole Dick Clark thing and the countdown and, yeah. So we'll, hopefully, that's something that continues. So we've a couple other notes, and Randy's on with us, Chief Gagney's with us, because I want to talk about our cruiser situation. Because we've, we've actually circulated a couple bids in the last week. And this is kind of a universal problem that we're seeing is the lack of availability of vehicles. Anyone who's driven by a car dealer knows vehicles just simply are not available. And for us, we are very much in a routine of, you know, obviously, vehicle replacement. We talked about that at our capital planning workshop. That's something that the town of Rockport has done very good with in terms of being on a schedule, funding that schedule, and ensuring the employees we have have the tools available to them to do the job we're asking them to do. And so we went through a process. First, we had a Public Works truck that we put out for bid, opened the bids, we had two bidders show up, two bids we opened. And one bidder did not even have a vehicle to sell us, but they gave us a price sometime maybe in 2023. And then the other, the other bidder said, well, we can give you one, this is the last truck I've got, fourth quarter of '22. So almost a full year out. Boy, that was concerning. And then the day later, Chief Gagney and I were getting ready for a bid opening for a cruiser that circulated, and there were tumbleweeds that went through the office because we did receive a bid. And so Chief went into, went into, went to work and tried to find a Plan B. So I don't know if you want to talk about this now, if he could maybe just, just like Chief just maybe talk about his process and what he kind of come up with as a, as an option there, if that's all right.
Yeah, that's great.
So, yeah, it's kind of been the perfect storm, but from every, everything that can happen wrong, sometimes a lot of rights can happen. I hadn't seen this before happen in my career, that a, that an automotive company just stops production just as soon as they start it. So I was thinking about it. I gave Mark a call because, you know, he's a lot older than me, so he's been around longer. To see if he'd ever, he'd ever seen anything like this himself, and neither one of us have. So as we were talking, we were throwing some ideas back and forth. And typical with Mark and I, I don't always agree with him, he doesn't always agree with me. But what came out of it was giving me an opportunity to go back and think of some of the things that he had mentioned and what we could do. I called a dealer that, yeah, here we go. I called a dealer that specializes in police vehicles and found out that he had one 2021 on the lot that was spoken for, that was a Dodge Charger. And then he told me he had a black 2021 SUV, Ford SUV on the lot, and that was listed at about $33,000. Rockport has silver vehicles. I really would like to stay within, keeping the same type of vehicle because it does symbolize, you know, the Rockport cars from the Camden cars. And, you know, people do like that when they're taxpayer in a certain town, they like to see those things. He also told me that he had two silver 2022s that were coming in in about 22 weeks, which would put us just about mid-June, so we could buy one with this, this budget. But I've been told by several dealers that if you find anything right now, you better take it. And the reason is because if they start production of those cars for 2023, every police agency that wanted to buy cars this year, they're going to be in line to get those cars. And I think it'll be limited production. It's because of COVID, it's because of the computer chips and everything else. And they probably make much more on the consumer market with vehicles than they do fleet vehicles. So they're going to, they're going to make their money where they need to make them. So part of our conversation was with Mark was, you know, I'm not a big advocate for selling used police cars on the open market. They do get more money, but I just think sometimes you're taking a chance, I'd rather let the dealer do that. This cruiser that we're going to sell, though, I will go back on my stance on that. And I think that in the current market for used vehicles, we probably could get more by selling it outright. And one of the things that I will do is I'm going to draft Mark because he's done this before and have him work with me to market that on the open market and see, see what we come up with. I mean, there is a chance we get the same as the dealer is going to give us, but I think that's a specific police vehicle that the public's not privy to buy brand new, so they only get them used. So I think, you know, I think what we need to do is if we're going to do that, we put in a, Megan and I can come up with it, and John, as is, where is, no warranties expressed or anything like that. I do think what we should do is purchase both of those vehicles, one with this current year's budget and the next, the other one with next year's projected budget, which I will be looking for the funding to purchase that. I think if we don't jump on this now, we're going to be out and we're going to be waiting quite a long time. The current mileage on our cruisers, we have a 2018 Dodge Charger with 83,420 miles. We have a 2016 Dodge Charger, which is the one we'll be selling, that has 121,940. And we have a 2017 Ford SUV with 105,328 miles. Another thing that boards, and I think it was brought up by Mark in the past, have expressed a desire for is to keep one of the old police cruisers and use it as an administrative vehicle for the town for codes, planning, whatnot, to cut down on the mileage. If we were to purchase both of these vehicles, I could take the 2016, excuse me, 2017 Ford SUV, and I could strip that out, and we could give that to the town office, and it could be used for that purpose to save some money. So what I would do with the two new vehicles, probably for now, one of them would be low-profile. They would have all the equipment inside. I probably just wouldn't put a light bar on the outside, it'd be an internal light bar. And that would be used for training, if we have a breakdown with another vehicle, something to that. But we basically kind of mothball it, not use it as much, but have access to it. The other new cruiser would be assigned primarily to Sergeant Moore and Sergeant Ford, Officer Ford on the day shift, to keep the mileage down on that. My younger staff likes the Dodge Chargers, so we would really put the miles to that Charger that we'll be cycling out at some point. By buying both of these cars now, we would secure new police vehicles and not have that anxiety of what if we don't have enough computer chips to go around next year or something like that. And it would also, Mark and I have always both talked about hybrid vehicles for the future. And this would give us a year or two to really wait and see what's coming out, even if it's not a police pursuit-type vehicle. But to open up that option of maybe looking at, say, I'll throw some ideas out, the Tesla's vehicle that we've looked at. You know, Toyota's got hybrids that they're putting out. That vehicle could be a non-pursuit rated for supervisor. But it gives us that opportunity. I'd rather, I'd rather go big right now and get some quality vehicles because as you see, the mileage is up there, where we have skipped a few years. I think if we missed the boat on this opportunity, we could be waiting. And, you know, I hate to swell Mark's head, but he actually has some good ideas once in a while, so I'll throw him that bone. But I can answer any questions that you might have.
If I might, I mean, one of the things that, I mean, I drove a car back in the day that had 204,000 miles on it. And it was certainly, in what I believe today, today's, it wasn't particularly safe. And two things, if you can keep a car and try to get rid of it under 100,000 miles, you're going to get at least 1,500 more for it. You know, and I'm, I'm a firm believer of, when we did the review of some cars that are out there on the market now that are similar aged and similar mileage, I mean, they're $15,000 or $16,000. I mean, that's what the dealer is going to ask for. I mean, you know, if we got 11 or 12, that would be great. But you're also buying a new one straight out without calculating what, what the trade would be. So I think you, you know, you're better off in funding, taking the money from the sale of the old one and funding your reserve, perhaps, rather than raising it through the budget process.
Hey, Mark, can I just interrupt you just a minute?
Yep.
When I got the price on the vehicle that was on the lot, that was 33,000, I don't have that figure, but 33,500 in that area. And the 2022 at that time was at 40,000. When I called the dealer to say, look, was a chance we may purchase two, what could we get for a price? That price for two of them came in at 66,722, I believe, is the number. So, you know, we came down, what's the numbers, Mark? Would we come down from 80,000 something to about $13,000 in savings?
Right.
If we go with both, so.
You know, and it's, I mean, it is important to give the guys good equipment to work with. You know, and you got to realize the numbers that Randy had given, you know, for the cars now at 121 and 105, you know, five months from now, you're going to have another 20,000 onto that before you can get rid of it. So, yeah, those numbers are low, but by the time June gets here, you know, you're going to have 130 to 120 or 25 on both of those ones you want to get rid of.
And I like the idea of keeping a vehicle if we can for administration because I think, while I don't know the number off the top of my head, I'm sure our reimbursement for mileage is pretty significant. And I think that would help control a lot of that.
You know.
Abby looking for a truck? I don't know if, could it all be combined with what Abby was asking for?
Could be. I mean, I just think there's good opportunity to, if we have that, have a vehicle to use it for administration.
I've tried to talk about this in the past, and I've gotten sort of shunned a little bit by management. If I recall correctly, there's seven or $8,000 worth of total mileage that is set aside in the various little pools of money in all the different departments. And Megan can correct me, but it's significant, you know, when you look, when you're trying to save a little bit of money, every little bit helps. And, you know, if Carrie or if John were out doing business on the town, for the town, and they had an accident in their vehicle, you know, we're going to have to help rectify that problem. Whereas if you have one, a town vehicle, you know, you've got less skin in the game, so to speak. Yeah, you know, you're going to have to pay for gas, but we, we buy gas at $2.00 and probably 75 cents or whatever it is now through Camden at the fuel depot. So, you know, we won't save all 7,000 or 8,000, but, you know, we'll save maybe five of it.
So is there anything procedurally we need to do? I know we went out for bid, we didn't get bids. Paying for one out of this year, one out of next year, is there anything that, as a select board, we need to approve? We need to document? I mean, I think it's the right decision. It sounds like we can get a deal by purchasing both. And I agree. I think the market, who knows, right? Who knows what the market's going to be in another six months? So I just don't know from a procedure perspective if there's anything we need to do.
Well, I think the money is already in there for this year, so I don't think that's...
For the one.
Right. The only question would be not having received any bids, but that could be rectified.
We tried, right? I mean, we went out for bid, it's not our fault, we didn't receive any.
We actually had dealers tell us, don't bother to send us a bid because we can't get anything for you.
I think if that dealer could communicate that he has one and what the price would be, that you've already reflected.
I have that.
Yeah, so that, that might satisfy the need, but Jonathan can work with you on that, I'm sure.
Yeah, do we need to take vote on anything?
Well, I think the main thing is the commitment from the board because obviously, this is effectively, we're spending money in a budget that you haven't even seen yet, right? So that there has to, you know, so we, we're presenting this concept to you all, and if the four of you are in agreement that this is the path forward, you know, we would, we would have, need to have some memorializing document that I assume the dealer would need to say yes for purchasing this and agreeing to do so.
Go ahead. So here's the deal, I mean, we're, you know, you, we have money to buy one, and the understanding would be to the dealer that our intention, if the budget passes, to buy the second one, he'll have it coming in, it'll be there. If the budget doesn't pass and we don't buy one, somebody else will buy it. But at least we can go ahead with one right now.
Well, but we're getting a good rate for two, right? I mean, don't we have to buy both?
Leo's a good man. He'll, he'll be, he'll be, take him on a boat.
I think, yeah, I think I'm, I get where the board is looking. I think if I call him tomorrow and say, we're definitely taking the one, we are, we want the other one as well, but it's going to depend on, you know, the budget approval. I think that he will, we've bought plenty of cruisers from him, from Camden and Rockport over the years. I think he'll honor that. Is he going to want more of a commitment? I know that's a decision you guys have to make as a board, and John has to. If you have fun somewhere that you could designate to pay for it if it doesn't pass, but we're still going to need a cruiser if it passes or not. So I don't know how you want to play that one, but that's a John question. All I need is the, yes, tell him one, tell him two.
There was, there was going to be a cruiser in this next budget. Is it part of this capital improvement plan that we're supposed to be voting on a little bit later here?
Yeah, right. That's right, that's exactly right. Yeah.
So how much was in there for this year, Randy?
Megan wouldn't know that. I can't remember off the top of my head.
Thirty-three thousand, thirty-three. So that covers one.
Just tell him that's all we're giving him.
Thirty-three, thirty-three, 361 per unit is what he's given us for a price, so.
Well, my 20% is that we should commit to the two, we should request the two. And I think then, you know, we know we have the funding for one. It's highly anticipated based on our conversations with capital improvement that we will have the funding for the second. But that's, that's my, that's my perspective.
Yeah, and I, I am not going to be second guessing our police chief on what he needs to do a good job for our town.
We'll leave that for Mark.
Well, if Mark was the police, no.
My, my 20% was, you know, number one, we've got the money in there for a vehicle this year. Come June, I suspect that things will change and production of vehicles will start to trickle again. So, and, and I highly, I can't say that your budget won't pass because the voters will dictate that. But, you know, just give Leo an indication that it's our intention to take the second one, but it's pending, you know, the vote in July 1st. So that way he knows. And like I said, I mean, even if it gets turned down, he'll find somebody to buy it.
So we'd be asking him to keep something that's in short supply on his lot?
That's, that's where I think we're going to run into a major problem.
No businessman, as nice as he is and...
Twenty-two weeks is going to get you to the end of, twenty-two weeks is going to get you to the voting time anyway.
Well, I understand that, but I'd like to give him a commitment that we're going to take these vehicles.
Well, I'd, hey, take one, I don't care. I mean, I, I'm, I'm okay taking.
But one is 40,000, right? We can take one, but it's 40.
Yeah, I think that's...
Yeah, well, you know, he's already shown his hand, so to speak. You know, so eighty turns into sixty-six, that tells you what he's got to play with. So, you know. Leo will treat us right.
Let's treat him right then. So I appreciate him wanting to treat us right, but I, I think we do have to give him, listen, I think we have to give him some type of commitment. I'm sure dealing with us in the past, that if something happened come June, come time for delivery, and for whatever reason we couldn't do it, I'm sure then we could, you know, he could seek something alternative. But Eric, anything, any comments or questions from you? I know everyone else has kind of expressed.
No, you said he has the two vehicles now, or he's getting the two vehicles?
He has the two, that'll be 22 weeks, they'll be here.
In production, I guess.
Yeah, so, you know, if we get him, while we buy the one, the budget comes up. Mark's right, it's about 22 weeks, so by the time they get here, we'll have the budget money and, you know.
But if it sells, we're another 22 weeks out of replacing it, so.
Right, right.
Like, I'm not a betting man anymore. I'm more of a sure thing.
Yeah, there's no other monies in the budget for, we don't have other, other reserved funds for these rollovers that we had, like parcel money already reserved for other vehicles.
Hey, what, what is in the reserve that we have?
I think 12 or 13,000, not enough to buy a whole cruiser. The replacement schedule that we have in place now is designed so that if we replace these cruisers on schedule four years from now, the cruiser purchases will have a zero net impact on the budget because the reserve will fully fund the replacement if we stay on schedule.
Is what we're talking about consistent with the schedule?
Yes.
We, we could blow up the schedule and finance all of this, but we are, how far away from that, Megan? From being funded itself actively?
Four years.
Well, and I think, I think that four years, if we start to do what we're talking about and selling them versus trading them, you're going to get more for them. I think your, your four years might come back to three, so.
Definitely a good time to be selling used vehicles.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, well, John and Megan, I guess, I'm not, I'm not sure what the next steps are, but it sounds like we need to talk with Leo and go from there and figure out how to pay.
Well, we'll, we'll figure out what the next steps are. And I, the main thing was trying to get this before you because this is a change in how we've been operating and...
Right.
And, you know, and this is a world, like, you're all acknowledging that it's not, we don't know what... And, you know, and this is a world, like you're all acknowledging that it's not, we don't know what I mean, I I wrote this report on Thursday, and by Monday, half of it was was old news, so I mean, that's where we are, and so it's.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're covered from the from the proposal perspective. Um, I mean, and I think we can because you've documented that we went out, we didn't get anything in return, so I I think we're covered from that perspective, but.
So worst worst case scenario is Leo says, nope, you know, I'm gonna charge you forty for one. You know, we've got thirty-three something in the budget. We've got, you know, twelve or whatever in the reserve, so we've got enough to cover the one. And then should the budget pass, we have money in there to go for the next one, plus the sale of the old one. I mean, you know, it's not as easy, but it should work as easy. Anyway, I'm done. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Anything else, John, for your report?
Um, no, I think we we just, we've we've uh quite a bit in there about streetlights. Um, you know, that's a that's an ongoing kind of uh fun situation. And and I got good news today, actually, that the um, one of the the indicate, one of the situations I talked about in there about the winding way old county road pole has been made ready for a light, so we're it's happening slow, but we are ticking off these these matters. Again, so many of them are based upon CMP's availability of power in a given location. Um, so there's that. We do have some, we do have the the UV view, which is the ubiquity view where we can see which lights are on or off. Um, Mark had one that the he had noticed on the corner cross and Main Street uh that on the on the website seems to be operating well. I went out to the site and I took my cell phone and I turned it off and turned it on again. And it said it was on, but no, no change, so warranty issue. Um, so we'll just have to get that addressed. And and we, you know, and I also put a hit in there in my report to for the uh fixit dot rockportmain dot dot net, uh which is that kind of that inter- interactive map where people can record issues that they have. Streetlights, plowing, you know, Denise found a a manhole or or a a catch basin caked in mud, um, you know. So, you know, this problem is everywhere. You never know what what's gonna cause them, so uh that's one way that you can record any issues. Not just for the four of you, but I'm saying for the the thousands of Rockport residents watching right now.
So that that was one of the my bone of contention, you know, we, you know, we authorized thirty thousand dollars for this piece of equipment. To to monitor these to ensure that they get fixed when they need be. And uh, you know, there it just had, that hadn't been watched as much as it ought to be, but I suspect it will be now.
I think that's fair to say, yeah.
All right, anything else, John?
There's a lot, but that's all for tonight, yeah.
All right, perfect.
Are you done with me?
I think we are done with you, yes.
Permission to leave, John?
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, do we have any public input on non-agenda items? Anyone, John, are you watching the lives or on the live stream?
I am. No comment.
No comments, okay. Any any amendments to the agenda? Okay, let's get into the consent agenda. There are a few different things on here, uh so we need to do them in particular order. And because some of you were not uh either present or on the board at particular times, there are certain things that you can't uh vote on, so um the first one is the um general assistance discussion.
Ready for a motion or?
I'm ready for an emo- for a motion on that, yes.
I move the board accept section A of the consent agenda.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All right, we'll go, we will go through role. I'm just gonna go in order. I am a yes, Mark.
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, the next is the resignation of Steve Smith from the ordinance review committee. And it is just Mark, myself, and Denise that I will be able to vote on this. Do we have a motion?
The board accept the resignation of Steve Smith from the ordinance review committee.
Second.
All right. Uh, any discussion?
I, you know, can you send him something, John, that that we could sign? I mean, I, Steve's done a lot of good work for us. You know, over the months and years, you know, going back decades, so. If we could just send him a little something, that would be nice. Thank you.
I I think Denise, I'm sorry, I think Diane does that under normal course, but if you could just validate, that would be great.
Yep, I actually I have a letter on my desk right now waiting for my my signature to to send out, but if others wanna wanna note, feel free to put their their scroll on as well, yeah.
Okay, um, so we'll go ahead with a vote. I vote yes, Mark.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the next item is the minutes from May twenty-fourth. Now, the challenge we have here is to meet, you are not at that meeting, so therefore we don't have a quorum to be able to approve these, so I think, John, I we can note that we reviewed them, Mark and I reviewed them, but we technically cannot vote because we don't have a quorum.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Let me just make a note, sorry.
So is that it for minutes? We're never gonna get like some old bizarre set of minutes anymore?
Oh, no, there's more coming.
From past.
Yes, yes. There's there we're we're going, so Megan is in the process of making uh of going through the the pertinent minutes of the last year, so that way Peter, who we just spoke with, um, when he's doing his review of the audit, part of that is, as some of you may know, is he goes through the meeting minutes to make sure what actions of the board are referenced with what he's seen on the on the uh on the books, so. You know, that's having approved minutes is part of that process, so.
We'll continue to see those up until, I can't remember when we started our new process, but.
I think July, I think when I got, when I came on board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay, the final item on here is to approve the minutes of December thirteenth.
I move the board accept the meeting minutes of December thirteenth.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, I vote yes, Mark.
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Moving ahead, we will move on to our action items. I didn't see um Cindy Cava join us, but our action item, we do have an application from her for the comprehensive uh plan committee. Um, she did include uh a information or brief bio about herself um in our packets, so would someone like to make a motion um for Cynthia Cava?
I move the board accept the committee application for Cynthia Cava to the comprehensive plan committee as a citizen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll go in order. I vote yes, Mark.
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Eric? You're on mute, Eric.
Not working.
Go ahead. All right, thank you. All right, and welcome to Cynthia. If you are on live stream, we look forward to having you participate, so thank you.
How many are on live stream, John?
Right now, we have six people watching, so.
Thank you, everyone, for watching.
Yes, thank you for joining us tonight. All right, the next item we have is to act on our employee safety mission statement. So, John, you wanna give us a walkthrough of that?
This is an annual, well, that annually, we have our annual training that where everyone gets together and and the board effectively signs off on a mission statement that says um, that that effectively the board is standing behind how the priority of safety and health and welfare of all of our employees on annual basis. We had hoped uh to double down on this mission statement with a townwide training of employees beginning tomorrow all day at the Opera House. We realized the health and welfare of our employees
And the safety.
Let's not put them all in the same place and, you know, all that. Um, and so we've we have a a different plan of of sorts. Um, and so we'll be kicking that off here over the next, I think, month to six weeks, but um, unfortunately, it was, it was a lot of time that Diane had put, I I talked about in my report, but Diane had put a lot of time into trying to make that happen and, you know, COVID, you know, just just when you think well-laid plans just picks you out the knees, so. Any event, um, signing off on this just basically has the board saying that we we believe we prioritize um, you know, health and safety of our employees.
And nothing's changed in the mission statement since last year, right?
Not to my knowledge. Megan, do you have any? Yeah.
No, I just wanna, you know, if it's the same thing.
Yes, I I believe it's the same thing. You will, we will need to go uh in to sign this. There's gonna be a couple of documents that will need um, signature, this being one of them, so put that on your calendar for some time this week, but um, if there are no other comments, can we get a motion?
I move the board approve the safety mission statement as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, I vote yes, Mark.
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is to act on our oper- emergency operations plan for twenty twenty-two. But John, I'll turn that over to you.
Yeah, so this is uh our our EOP, um, and this is the uh the document that someone governs all of our our operations when when things go bad, and uh in fact, when we had our um our washout um event of Apolloine. Um, this is the document that governs how we should be operating when events like that occur. Um, activated EOC, who are the people you call, who are the phone numbers? All of that information is all included in the EOP, so you're not left scrambling saying, oh, I gotta look at my cell phone, and who is that guy's name, and he does this, and she does that. It's all in one plan, a hundred and twenty pages long, but it's it's all laid out, it's uh this is the it is a form document of sorts, so you fill in what's needed, but um Knox County EMA Director Ray Sisk, um, has been a great resource for mid-coast towns, but Knox County towns in particular, and this is, this is how, this is our our path for dealing with things that we never wanna have to deal with as a as a community.
And it's easy to find what you need at the time? Overwhelming to me, so I I think this is really weird.
Well, you know, it it kind of on the situation, you know, it was what we came up with after that storm event. We had that, you guys, we had your meeting that Monday night after the day after that storm. And we had planned during the day to have a meeting later in that week to talk about how do we go through these events, because we never activated the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center. We never activated it. And in retrospect, as we were sitting around that room with all the stakeholders, fire chief, public works, um, you know, Travis is there is 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 the deputy on 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 call that day. Um, you know, everybody was fire chief, harbor master. And we looked back and we said, we should have operated, we should have activated the EOC. We should have had people in the town office communicating. Now, I was doing some of those pieces in terms of communicating with the public using Facebook, but it also, that was where we found out how important it would it be for us to have a tech service where we could reach out to our residents and easily communicate with them in a given location. And that's what sort of started the ball rolling on this idea of boy, how do we reach out to our community? How do we reach out to individual neighborhoods? Hey, there's gonna be a road closure because we're you know, changing a covert on your road. There is no way, in fact, but we've we've started that process. There is no way for us to easily do that at that time, and so that's not part of this plan, but I would think once we have that system in place, there will be changes in the plan next year that'll account for that, because we will have the ability to reach out. Um, hopefully to, you know, neighborhoods, sections of a road, um, you know, what have you, um, in dangerous situations like that.
But John, I just have a question, and I I don't have a lot of experience with this, but I know we have Jason as the EMA Director. We have Abby, the EMA Assistant Director. And I just wonder how in a true emergency that really would work for us, knowing that if it was a fire, Jason would be on scene with the fire if it was you know, a boating, you know, a boating accident that Abby would be there, and I I just wonder how we select those folks or if we do that annually, if we need to kind of have some conversation about that to make sure that, because in my eyes, the the director and the assistant director, like, I see them in a room, like, surrounded by all these people, like facilitating, and I just don't know to put that extra on those two people if that would work in those scenarios, but I don't know how it's it's worked in the past, so um it's really just a question.
If if I could, my my recollection of past events, particularly with these two, your uh EMA Director and your assistant, there's training that they have to have every year, I believe, and that's recorded in the town that helps them better prepare to do what we're asking them to do as well as we're paying them a stipend to do that. So you know, it seems to have worked in the past. I assume there the training for the particular EMA and Deputy EMA uh material is is on site, so that if we're ever questioned about it, Jonathan, uh, might be something to look into. But uh it it seems to have worked in the past, and I think uh nobody is gonna be really suited perfectly to handle any one particular event like a you know, a flood. I mean, you're your fire chief and you're 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 uh harbor master. You know, they're not gonna be as well prepared, but that's why they have Mike there, your highway foreman.
And the flood port has sort of quite a role here. I mean, we're the ones to declare that there's an emergency.
And put a and put a plan in place, and yeah, we have a big role, no pressure.
Not really any training more.
Yes, I think we did go as new select board. People went through kind of a safety and emergency planning, and we guided with Jason based on, yeah, the Knox County stuff, but.
No, I didn't have any, I mean, I went over to see what the nine-one-one guys look like. But nothing about how do you declare an emergency?
Right. No, it's you're right, that there is a role, and there's a definite role, because, I mean, you now, what you have done as a group, you have also provided for the opportunity for one of your members to sign warrants. That's the most important thing that the five of you can do is to make sure the flow of money continues to roll. That's the most important thing in in an event like that, and in fact, I'm really more pushed to the side of of that process too, because I'm really signing checks. That's really my role, and it's about, and and that's as far as it goes. You know, you you're supporting um, your EMA Director, who really is at the at the heart of running the EOC process. Um, but, you know, I I think, Michelle, you do, I mean, you bring to mind a a point, which was, you know, there is the in the event issues of having EMA Directors and and their role, and then there's the after event, which is chasing down the funds, trying to make sure we get the reimbursement. Uh, I mean, the amount of time that's been spent on that has really been Megan, uh Megan's been spending a lot of time and working on trying to compile all that data, working with Brandy at Public Works to get photographs and and invoices in. I mean, it's uh it's it's a strange, EMA is a strange, EMA Director or Deputy Director is a strange role because you know, you think it's very much about emergency management, and it certainly is in the middle of the event. But it be it becomes a pretty wonky uh exercise of bureaucratic red tape. Um, and thankfully, we have people who are willing to. Um, and thankfully, we have people who are willing to fight through that process, as we are on, on this uh, this theme of storm, but. Um, I, I think it, I think it's something to talk about, and in fact, that is something that came up at that kind of after event meeting of. You know, do we have it phased the right way as a town? To have two people who could be in the middle of an event at the same time, and who, how do we make sure? Um, the whole pro, the whole, the whole operation, the whole town operation is, is running effectively. Um, so, it's, it's a good point.
All right, any other uh, discussion or questions? And if not, can we get a motion?
Just have a quick question.
Oh, good. Yeah.
I know it says severe winter storms, and since October wasn't winter, should we take out the word winter?
It's a good point.
Things have changed, you're right.
Changed, yep. Yeah, and amend that to be severe.
Yeah, it's interesting, because then it goes to mass casualty incident, and then, but within that is that second paragraph that says the most likely damage from flooding. Will be to roadway sections. I mean, it's sort of like, that's sort of comes out of nowhere. I guess it's. A mass casualty incident is supposedly the flooding that.
Oh.
Isn't that weird? I mean, it's.
So maybe flooding should be its own separate.
Yeah. And I know you just, you said this was kind of a blanket form where you filled in the blank, but. And I know if you read further down, it says the mass casualty incident is assumed to be.
Oh, you go up in the list, it says localized flooding.
Yeah, and then localized flooding, it's almost like those two should be flipped based on our more recent experience, and I think we need to take winter out of storms, but those are just antics, really.
Yeah, so localized flooding in that laundry list right there in the table. Everything else is bolded when it's then discussed, like severe storm, mass casualty. Wildland forest, oh, I see, and then flooding is bolded in there, anyway. I guess it's all there.
Yeah, I'll just make a note of that.
Worry about it is I don't see it as a very user-friendly, something that you grab when the emergency is happening and say, okay, where's A, B, C of what to do? Um, you know, I don't know if it's, if this actually ends up in a, in a binder with tabs, so you can quickly go to the section that applies to what you're having to deal with, or if at that point, you're having to sort through this. How many pages is this, you know, eighty-page doc?
It's a lot, yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
I think.
You, you do have your table of contents. In your emergency operation plan, there are two pages at the beginning of it. That tell you what, oh, for your function and uh, annexes, your hazard attachments, your job descriptions. I mean, there's a lot that, that they outline there, so.
So when we went through the process of adopting this the first time, uh, Diane and I went through and made individualized packets for each job duty. So if you're assigned a particular job duty, you get this packet where there's a cover letter that says you are responsible for A, B, and C. And there's like a checklist and any forms that you need, so if you're assigned a particular duty, it's not your responsibility to go through this entire plan. You get that packet, you read that one page, and you understand what your duties are.
Our one, our one page is page seventy-four. Right? Assumes responsibility for overall response and recovery, establishes a public disaster assistance. We need knowledge and training of the emergency operations pa- plan, and we need a paper, pen, pencil, and a clipboard.
To keep at the ready at all times.
Keep at the ready.
Okay.
All right, are you ready for a motion on that?
Yeah.
I move the board approve the emergency operation plan for twenty twenty-two as presented.
Second.
I will know, we will make that one, I will ask Diane to make that one modification to remove winter from severe storm, but that's not a material change. Okay, um, any discussion? All right, I'm a yes, Mark?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, our next uh, point of order is the Act on the Capital Improvement Plan. We had a workshop about this earlier this week, we also discussed it. In last month's meeting and then prior to that, so John, Megan, anything else you would like to add?
Um, no, I, I thought it was a good discussion, you know, I think we, we got, by the end, we, we really got to where we needed to be, which was. It's the start of a conversation in a way, um, that it's the start of a budget conversation, really, and, and that. While there's relative rankings of priorities, it, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a highlighter rather than a, a pencil. Um, in terms of trying to push me in the right direction of making sure your priorities are included um, in, in the budget document you see in about. Well, a little more than a month. Um, so that's, I mean, I think that's where we, where we ended up, and, and I think I feel pretty good that. You know, so we answered a lot of questions, there's unanimity, that's good, because that's frankly, unanimity is boring anyway, uh, and it allows for everyone, you know, different, different sets of opinions to be heard, so um. I think, I think it was a very good, you know, workshop and, and um, you know, Megan made those updates, and hopefully you all had a chance to, to look it over. Is there anything?
Yeah, so I guess I'm wondering about our action, cuz I. I still don't really understand, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna be locked in.
I don't, yeah.
I appreciate what you're saying, we're giving you, we've given you our thoughts on this, now we're through the budget process and we'll. Sort of see each of these in the budget context.
Well, right.
Right, I mean, you, you know what our priorities are based on, on our feedback and what's documented.
Right.
But, you know, do I expect to see every one of them in the budget? No, I, you know, you're gonna look at the final number and you're gonna say, there's no way in heck. Those five people are gonna approve this thing, so I need to.
Right.
Dial it back and pick the ones that are more important, right?
So I think what Denise, you're, what you're getting at is what are we really voting on, right? Are we voting? Are we voting that we all agree to what we talked about? Or last week, or whenever that was, um. I mean, we know there'll be changes.
Update, but I'm not, I'm not comfortable voting on that document as approved.
And I, I'm not sure, we did it last year.
No, I don't think you did. The, the purpose of why I wanted to have this before you is that. We have a plan, right? The idea is that this is effectively what the town is hoping to accomplish from a capital planning perspective, right? We've, we've talked about what those capital planning goals are, and while there's a long list of them. There's a handful of them that you all agree are, are high priority items, every single one said one, one, one. Uh, not many, but a, a couple, right? So. The, the purpose of this is really is a snapshot in time to say. This is where we are. And, and it's, um, it's like we're, it's like I'm cooking a meal for you. I know this is, this is the order that you're all putting in, and I know that you all like chicken, but. So-and-so doesn't like asparagus, and so-and-so doesn't like, you know, uh, yams or whatever it may be. And everyone can pick from that what they will, and ultimately, the votes of, of the five of you in setting your budget will be as they are. Um, but the idea is that of the snapshot in time, the most important thing to me are the items of unanimity and the relative ranking of priority. From you as a, as a group, not as individuals, but as a group. And then understanding from that. That you may say it's a one in terms of your capital plan, but when you see the dollar amount that I've put attached to that. You may say, that's not what I'm, that's not what I'm voting for, or that's a different plan than what I thought it was. That's completely understandable, it's not a, um, you know, we've seen politicians say I voted for it before I voted against it, right? That's not what this is, that, this is the, that's the opposite of, this is really more of a, a relative ranking as, en masse. Um, and, and that's all, we're, that's as far as it goes in terms of locking anyone into positions or opinions.
I'm trying to, trying to realize why we need this, I'm sort of siding with Denise with the fact that.
Right.
We've already done it, we've, we've looked at everything that was presented, we've prioritized it numerically. And it's up to you to provide a budget with some of these things in there. So if we, if we say, okay, we, we're going, we. You know, the board approved the capital improvement plan as presented, so then all of a sudden, if you present something to us, you can say, well, hey. No, you guys said we.
You approved it, right.
Right, you approved it as you presented it, well, I'd rather have. You know, I, I'd like to have that little bit of flexibility, I'd like to see things in the budget. But that's where you pick and choose, you know, some of the top things as we indicated. You know, I don't know whether I've explained that enough, but.
No, I, I, I agree, I think that we gave direction, we gave input, I just, I don't know what we would be voting on other than. We gave direction and import, input, but. That direction and input could change based upon, you know, not that we're gonna say roads. Aren't number one priority, but let's just use that as an example, we say, oh, hey, it's number three now, I mean, it's not, you know, we, we want that flexibility, I, I just don't know if there's anything to vote on. And Megan, I don't know if that puts you in a. In any position budget-wise, if we said, let's not vote on it, but you have our recommendations, you have our output from the workshop.
The difference between a capital improvement plan and a budget is that even though you vote to adopt this capital improvement plan, no matter what, a capital improvement plan. Is always fluid, it's always gonna change. And what you approve in this really has little to no impact on the actual budget, other than. Showing John what your priorities are, so even if you rated something as a three in this, but you decide at budget time, it's a one and you want it in the budget. This really has zero impact on you putting that as a priority in your budget, what matters at the end of the day. Is the approved budget that is approved by the Select Board and the voters, it doesn't matter if it was approved in this or not, the budget is what matters. So approving this or not, I mean, it doesn't really matter, and it's not gonna hold you to the fire. That you put it in here one way, but come budget time, you wanna do something different.
Yeah.
And sort of by the same token, this document still has a life, even if we haven't formally approved it. It's, it still has a use as you prepare for budget season.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think so, I mean, I think, that's why, I guess my point is I, whether you put a stamp on it and say we approved it or didn't approve it. My thought is, it kind of ends the conversation, it's the snapshot, you know, you click the shutter on the photo, that's as, that's as far as it goes, but. The reality is, you all have been through enough budgets here, and I've been through budgets. We can all think it's a great idea in February, and think it's a terrible idea by April, even if there's, even if we don't go through this process, so.
I may have to wait till April.
Right, that's fine, right, yeah, so, that's okay, I'm, I'm. It's a fluid pro, the whole thing is a very fluid process in my, from my perspective, so.
Eric, were you trying, Eric, were you trying to say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, what if we just reworded to say move the board. Approve the concept of the capital improvement plan to assist in the formulation of the budget process. Would be something that could be utilized if you definitely need a vote on it, and then it changes the scope saying it's just a concept.
Um, or the other option is to note that there's no need, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how to handle that. The other option is to vote that there's no need, I mean, to indicate there's no need for a formal vote as, you know. Details were discussed at the workshop, I mean.
Yeah, as the attachment reflects the board's input from the workshop.
From the workshop, yeah, would we be okay with that?
I like that.
Okay, so I'm gonna put uh, no need for formal vote.
And in terms of process next year. I, and I'm certainly comfortable with going down the same road of ending, I, I just, I want there to be some sort of like concluding piece to that. Whole conversation, there's a lot of work that goes into it, and even if it's just, if it turns into a workshop. Where the board sits down and looks at it, talks about the rankings, and that's where, that's where the conversation ends, at least so there's a. Um. Reckoning sounds very final, but, but there's some sort of like endpoint of the conversation where we say, okay, we've done this, we've all looked at it. We've looked at where everyone is kind of in that process, we've talked about these priorities. We aren't surprised when we see them in the budget. And that's, and that's where it is, it's just to make sure that you guys are engaged, and the budget group is engaged in that process. More so than just that, that annual budget process.
And it's very helpful to see this sort of longer term.
Agree.
Definitely a help.
So what I've noted in the minutes is uh, no need for formal vote, the capital improvement plan reflects the discussions and agreements. At the January sixth, twenty twenty-two workshop. And at least it will be um, captured in our meeting minutes.
Sounds great.
All right, any further discussion on that? Okay, next we have um, Act on the, on the dissolving of the Investment Committee. Um, so Megan and John, I will turn that over to you.
Do you wanna start, Megan? You want me to? I can.
Go ahead.
Okay, so um. Part of our review of all the committees uh, this summer. The Investment Committee always existed as one of these committees where I didn't really dig into it, and I was really unsure of, of its role. Um, and the further we've got, we've, we've moved down this road. Um, it seems as though it's the one committee that really we left alone, that really shouldn't have been left alone. Um, I think that there's a role for a group of outside individuals to advise the Select Board. Um, and staff on the needs for uh, reviewing the town's investments. Uh, I think that that makes a, a lot of sense. I think it's a task force rather than a standing committee, and that's, that's really the distinction there, so I don't think it's a question of, do we need outside help? I think we do need outside help, but I think it's a task force that has a singular purpose. Um, and, and, and it's the purpose that perhaps sunsets over time. One area that if there is a feeling of the board that they wanted to see an ongoing review, that could be something we could task. Parts of the, the Budget Committee to handle, or potentially have this a task force be under the Budget Committee and report to the Budget Committee. Um, if there was a, a feeling of a need that we need to um, ensure that group is staffed and there's an ongoing um. Conversation, but my sense is that this is a group that meets once a year, and. It, the needs of the group and the, the staffing and all this, it seems to be outside for what it is.
All the heavy lifting, what, Megan, three, four months ago, maybe longer than now, but. Um, I was the liaison with that group, so they've already, they've just gone out with RFPs and changed investments and, and have done all of that, so. I mean, the heavy lifting really, I can't imagine we're gonna do that annually, um, I mean, not to say we shouldn't look at it annually, but. I don't think we, we will need that type of due diligence for a while, so. I mean, I think it, it makes sense, and when we get back to that, to that point, to, you know, establish a task force to look at that, to your point, put it under the Budget Committee, whatever we decide. Um, but I think that it makes sense. Go ahead, I've got a couple of, Mark?
Okay, um, you know, and I think that, that the work that they do. You know, in, in the field, you know, with investments, I mean, Eric, you're. You're pretty savvy there too, I mean, would it be beneficial to offer an opportunity to roll them into? Uh, the Budget Committee, I mean, we're always looking for members in the Budget Committee, maybe they're, you know, they would want to, you know. Do that side of things, I mean, the Budget Committee, I mean, they meet, the Investment Committee meets a couple of times a year, three maybe? Or is it every quarter? I forget which.
I mean, once a year.
Once a year.
Yeah. So, I mean, you know, the, the Budget Committee, you know, maybe meets six times, seven? I mean, maybe with their area of expertise with finances, they might want to participate in the Budget Committee, so. Long story short is, should we offer them an opportunity if we dissolve it to, to become a member of the Budget Committee?
Don't they have to run? Isn't that?
Has to be elected, yeah.
True, but I mean, that could be.
We could definitely, right, we could put out that invitation if there were. Based on the Budget Committee to, to be part of the election, sure.
Yeah.
Who reviews like the quarterly reports on these investments? When the, when the, whoever was selected to invest this for us, who reviews those quarterly reports and says. These are going well, good choice, I don't know, I mean, what's, where's the oversight?
I look at them every month, and then currently, the reports are put on a share. I look at them every month, and then currently the reports are put on a SharePoint drive for. The investment committee, but only one member looks at them, and they only meet once a year.
So it's not to say we couldn't put some more governance or review, or maybe that, I I don't know where that falls, but. Not sure we need a formal committee to do that. I don't know.
Right.
Is the investment fund a managed fund, like Vanguard or something, or is it? Actual investments that the investment committee has decided where our money should go?
It's managed through the first.
Yeah, so.
And then the first finds equities, bonds, et cetera, to invest in?
Hmm, based on our investment policy, which the investment committee just updated when we did the RFP for a new investment firm.
Right, right. Just a couple thoughts on it. I mean, I I do worry about the oversight, because I think it is important, and even if it's just one member of the investment committee and. You know, presumably as someone who has an interest and expertise and background in this area. And that, that sort of dovetails a little bit with my concern about sort of gutting our whole committee. Uh, approach. I mean, I, I guess I, when I got on the select board and moved to Rockport, you know, there were, there were a lot of different committees and it seemed like. A way for citizens to become engaged with their town government. And I appreciate the analysis of where it's been helpful and maybe, you know, some of these committees, you know, maybe are more of a problem than they're worth. But I guess I'd be a little concerned, and I, so this is separate from the investment committee decision. Maybe this committee really serves no purpose, or it's more, it's better suited to a task force. But if we just end up with. Um, you know, our staff and our town government, which is great. We have an amazing staff and town manager, and then the select board sort of comes and goes. Um, but do we lose the engagement of our citizens? In a way that the committee process sort of allowed them to become more engaged? And I don't know, maybe harbor and parks are enough for. And and.
How many, John, how many um, committees have we collapsed? You know, off the top of your head, I know Cemetery was one of them.
It was uh, less than five. I think we originally had, I really had a list of six or seven. I think we ended up. Only, I think it was actually three or four now that, and this would be the fourth or fifth. I can't remember where Cemetery falls in the, in the mix, but.
Yeah, and Opera House, yeah.
Yeah, Opera House, yeah.
I mean, that's sort of an example, if what we want. Is an endowment and a group of committed citizens to fund the Opera House, when you just sort of cut the committee off at the knees. You know, it just, it's mixed messages. How do you develop citizens who care about these town properties or these? Town investments? I mean, that, it's a fair amount of money that's in these event, investments.
Yeah.
Um, so I I don't, I'm not trying to reach a resolution tonight or suggest I withhold my vote on the investment committee, but it was like. Making, thinking more about what is the purpose of these committees?
Yeah, it's a good, it's a very valid point.
I, and I think I I would, I mean, I agree with you Denise. I mean, I think that that's a. It's in, the committee structure is important in that the committees, they're, they're, they're um. They're children of the select board. You know, their, their recommendations and their work is all meant to flow back to the select board. And so the question, you know, to me, the other question is, eh, what, what's the right balance of? A committee as opposed to the staff? Um, and and I think what, what I've evidenced is that, you know, we have a lot of committees who have. Who have gone, you know, beyond, above and beyond, certainly. We know there's some part, some committees that have just gone, you know, and gotten incredible amounts done. We have other committees um, that have barely met, and. What is the proper, to my, my feeling is coming in is that what's the proper role of staff? Right? What, what are we expecting of those who work for us in the town to accomplish as? The, you know, the experts um, in a given area, and then what part of that really needs community input? You know, for example, the harbor committee is a great example of it. They are a body which really should be in tune with the boaters, the fishermen. Uh, the, 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 the landowners around the harbor, um, they're a touchstone in so many ways. For um, for all the operations that occur within the harbor. On the other hand, you know, we have state statute that says the harbor master can do pretty much whatever the harbor master wants to accomplish. The harbor master works well when the harbor master has a good sense of what the community's needs are. So there's, there's that balance there of, of, on the one hand, statutorily, the harbor master can and has the right to do. Far more than than uh, probably most people realize, but on the other hand, the the ebb and flow of that, in so many ways. Of really wanting to hear from two new members, the, you know, stakeholders and the like. Um, and making sure that, yes, this is the, the individual who is responsible, but hearing from the committee in part. And so that ebb and flow has to occur, and I think it works in some cases and other cases. We have to figure out what that, what that proper balance is, but I think, you know, talking with the harbor committee when I went. You know, to visit them in September, I mean, they were feeling as though this is a great, we have a great, a great kind of give and take with our harbor master. And so how do we, how do we somewhat duplicate that where we have stakeholders who are part of a committee? We have a department head who's, who's really in charge of making sure things get done, things are accomplished, our budget priorities that this board wants to see accomplished. And making sure that there's that balance, you know, that that they're hearing from and 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 that's happening. I think in the har- in the Opera House, just to take from the other side of it, that was one where we really, so much of the management was put on a committee. Uh, we had staff, but we had so much of it on a committee level, and that the balance, we didn't strike the balance as well. Um. So now we've kind of gone away from that, but it seems as though there is, there's always a community input, and that's the thing about the town government piece. We, we, all of us could work in offices and and do our best piping away, but it's about people and it's about community and. And trying to keep in those things in balance, um, we have, we have to accomplish. So I I hear what you're saying, and I think. I don't know the right answer, like you said, we solve it tonight, but I think there has to be a. We have to have the right amount of input, but also recognize that the, the budget priorities of the community. Um, you know, what's passed in the budget, for example, which is why we wanted committee budgets part of the work plan. So that way it's all flowing through and everyone's approving of the same thing at the same time. Um. I I don't know the answers, but I I think we have to keep trying, and the, and the one other thing I'd add, and this is the last thing. People, it's harder to communicate. In this world with us doing this with Zoom, it's really hard to have that give and take. And so we have to do, we have to work even harder to try to get community input, and people feel shut out at times, and so. Um, how do we do that in this era? I don't, I don't know. Um, that's a lot, I know, but anyway.
So I, you know, I. And I realize that we, we've been trying to combine groups of, you know, to make them. More efficient, for the lack of a better phrase, but I think, you know, I I'm not, you know, this is just my opinion at the moment. I'm not necessarily. Inclined to dissolve it at this time, but I certainly would like for us to talk about uh. If we don't, I want or would like to have more interaction between them and us. Uh, maybe two or three more times a year, you know, rather than just the one time that they meet and, or whatever Megan tells us. From her monthly observations.
In terms of, you you're thinking, Mark, in terms of updates, in terms of how the investments are are, are doing relatively? Is that, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I mean, you know, they meet once a year, and I mean, I guess, you know, I I think. You know, it it would be, it would be easier if we had more updates, and I'm not saying once a month, but. You know, once every.
A quarter, whatever, you know.
Yeah, that if we can update that, yeah, the things we suggested before. Are, you know, going along well, the moving from one bank to the other has provided more fruit, or. We should, you know, we're, something else is happening and, and this is where we're headed, so we get a little taste of what they're thinking. Prior to the actual date of them wanting to do it.
Do they have, do they do the RFP and when, and I should know this, but I've only been through the one cycle. Do they do the RFP annually to look at the investment portfolio, or is that like every couple of years or?
We only did it this time because we weren't satisfied with the results that we were seeing with our prior manager.
And I think it had been a number of years also, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, like twelve.
Yeah.
This committee is also very hard to get a quorum. I struggle to get enough members to show up. It's only a four committee. Board, so I would say that if the board wants to keep it, which is fine. We need some help getting people onto this board that are willing to put the time into it. I mean, to schedule the, a meeting for the remote policy and all that. I tried for weeks.
Yes.
Find a date.
And witness to.
For everybody, and I could not get a quorum.
Well, so like Mark Schwarzman is on that committee, right? And I think he does, isn't here in the winter, right? I mean.
He, well, I don't know if he's here, but I know Larry's not here. Um, one of the members travels a lot for work. Oh, it's very difficult to get a quorum out of that board. And they've only had four members pretty much for the last seven or eight years. One member joins, they're a five-member board for a while, and then somebody resigns, so it is really hard to get a quorum and. Get them together to meet.
And and I would also add, I I spoke with a couple former members of this group who advised that we didn't need this group. So it it wasn't, you know, merely, you know, let, let's, let's cut, you know, the the low hanging fruit of this. This was, these are members who served and said. You, this isn't an effort that you need to, you know, if you were to do a one-off, a task force to oversee, you know, a, an RFP. That makes great sense, but on an ongoing basis, they didn't see value in continuing with the group.
Right, so if we had some other mechanism to just sort of review the investment performance year to year. As a town, that's.
Right.
A little more effective.
Well, maybe, maybe it becomes, you know, a quarterly update, and Megan, I don't know if that's something you, you give us, or I I I don't know what the mechanism is for that, but. It sounds like that's the one thing that people are concerned about is how do we know how we're performing and what are those triggers when we say? So that it's not another twelve years. Um, what's the trigger when we say, hey, it's been five years, let's do. Let's put a task force together, or, you know, how, when, when do we make that decision when we need to go out for another RFP?
So right now, like, uh, the benchmarks are provided by a annual review that the manager does. So they compare how our investments have performed ver- versus like the S and P five hundred and. Other investment platforms. So instead of the investment manager giving that. Presentation to the investment committee for the investment committee to then regurgitate it and give it back to you in another form. The investment manager would then give that directly to you.
Yeah, we pay for that service too, right? I mean, it's part of our, so I mean, that would make sense to me, have our, our, have our investment manager that we are paying. You know, whether, whether we decide it's quarterly, if it's twice a year, whatever that decision is, they would come in front of the board and provide. An update and and basically talk about what they're, if if we're not earning money, what they're going to do to put us in a position to earn money.
Makes sense to me. Why put a middleman in between there? I mean. It's a managed fund, which means it should be performing well. Megan gets the statements. If it's not performing most, you can flag it. You could give us a quarterly update at our, as part of our board packet. I mean, you're getting the statement, and instead of putting it on a SharePoint for them, put it on a SharePoint for us. We could look at it. Uh, unless there's some stipulation or ordinance that says we have to have a citizen advisory panel reviewing this. I don't really see the need of having an intermediary doing what we should be doing directly.
Yeah, my only, if we thought we had some expertise that way, but I agree, I think, from what we're hearing.
Yeah, well, for me, I I look at them as part of what I do, so.
So we've got the expertise today.
Yeah, I mean, as long as I'm looking at it, it's like, I, I know, and I can compare in my head, and. You know, I follow that. So for me, it's something normal. I don't know about other people, but. You know, as long as I'm around, I think we have that, and with Megan doing it upfront. And if we had the investment manager giving us a semi-annual review. You know, and then the, you can always do the task force when we need it, if we feel like you need to change firms.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, well, with that.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yeah, sure.
When, when we have something like this on the agenda, has, have we already discussed this with the chair of the committee? That we're taking this action?
No, no, this was, this was start of the, the conversation, so um, if if you felt it, I, you know.
No, I don't have a problem moving forward with this, I guess partly because from what I'm hearing, but I, I do feel like. It's, it's awkward. I had that situation with some of the Opera House committee members who had no idea that we had done away with the Opera House committee.
Yeah.
Um, so just in terms of communication, I guess. You know, we can take the action, but then just.
Reach out.
Reach out.
Yeah.
I move the board dissolve the investment committee effective immediately.
Second.
Any further discussion? Um, I vote yes, Mark.
Originally, I was thinking not to, but, you know, there are ways around that and cutting out the middleman. Um, and having the person that we're paying come present it to us. I will vote yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item on our list is a follow-up on the parking task force mission, and I know we were supposed to have. Um, an update or an overview. Um, I know Orion has been out, uh, but John, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I, so I I would, rather than the suggested motion, which is the motion that I had suggested. Uh, uh, at your last meeting, I would actually, um, after I give this uh, suggest. Um, update, I would ask that you probably move the table um, until your next meeting. Um, but this uh, effectively, um, so Orion's been away, um, he's had a fatal emergency, so unfortunately he's been unable to. Um, to have that drilled down update that I was looking for, and we had discussed at your last meeting in December. Uh, but I did want to share with you, if I can, um, bear with me just one sec. Um. So this is part of the work that they had accomplished. Um, I don't know if it's big enough for everyone to see, but. Um, basically, this is the parking map of of downtown, um, which was part of the. Uh, study um, that the, the task force and Orion was engaged with. Um, in particular, which was meant to identify um, parking areas, um, two-hour parking, general parking, seasonal parking. Um, and then this big green uh, circle here is effectively a, a quarter-mile walking zone, just to show. You know, how far it is um, from, you know, let's say, I guess, from the Opera House of sorts. Um, you know, apart, because obviously one of the main things we hear about so much is, well, there is parking, but how far do you have to walk? Well. This gives you a sense of that quarter-mile radius. Um, so if you had an event, let's say at the Opera House. Um, what does a quarter-mile walk look like? So um. They, there is additional work that they've put in that, that Orion and I briefly discussed, and which includes um, uh, locations um. For potential additional parking, um, lot owners, individuals to communicate with. Uh, um, the, 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 um, the group in, in Bar Harbor who was responsible for the paid parking. Um, their proposal and 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 obviously their work, they're beginning with the town of Camden, um, all that's one package, but. And I'm glad to go into that, but I think it's probably better if Orion's able to join us and and really. I think it's probably better for Ryan's able to join us and, and really talk a little bit more about that. But I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update, um, knowing that we were going to, we were going to try to talk about that tonight. Um, I just don't think we have, um, all the information that you would need to make any sort of decisions.
And John, what would, what would be helpful and what we might not have, I don't know, is. The number of spaces. So I think this is a good map. But I think if we had the number of spaces, because I think that's one question. No one has ever been able to really answer is, well, that's great. I see all this parking, but how many, how many, is it two? Is it twenty two? You know, because then, then we can really start to say, well, we, if we only have X amount of spaces. Then that opens up the further discussion of what the needs are, et cetera. So, um, I don't know if you can put it on this map, but that would be helpful for me.
Okay, that's great.
And what we'll do is I have noted in the minutes that we will table, uh, for our next meeting for a full update.
Okay, sorry, I had myself on mute.
Oh, you're fine, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, I was. Felt pretty good about that initially, but so here's what I'm gonna do is if you're gonna have, if you're gonna ask someone. To determine how many parking spots we have. You know, I want you to do it. In a, in a manner that reflects. What a. Industry standard parking. Space is. And I believe and Randy might know this, but, uh. I think the standard that the state has is nineteen feet long. And ten feet wide. So if we're gonna justify. Making a parking lot in the future down there. We need to know that our streets aren't wide enough. To safely have parking on both sides. As is currently. The case. So I, you know. You, you can't use Union Street on both sides, for instance, but it happens. So that's what I'm saying is, you know, we. What, what can we safely? Do, not what's available. Using the standards. That the state has. If that makes any sense, Jonathan?
Yeah, no, I, I understand exactly what you mean.
You know. You know, even the parking spaces they have in Camden, you know, when I go over there in the morning for coffee. You know, my truck is not a full sized truck in their spaces. My truck doesn't fit in. You know, I could have the nose at the white line and, and the back bumper will be. Two feet over the other little white line behind me. So I think they found a compromise in size to. To maximize the number of vehicles that they can put in there. But I guess I'm, I'm trying to say, you know, we're gonna do it. Let's make sure we do it. Using a standard that's out there.
Well, we will move that forward. All right, uh, the next item is to act on the reserve policy. So Megan, John?
Go ahead, Megan, you put, you put more, more on this. So yours, you muted.
John and I met and reviewed the limits on all of the policy, on all the reserve accounts. To make sure that. The limits that were set on them. Met what today's prices are and what. Uh, it would cost us to do whatever that reserve account was set up for. So you'll notice that there are some changes in those and then. The real reason that we did this was to add the winter road maintenance reserve. Um, as a result of your last select board meeting and the encumbrances and transfers that you approved. Uh, we also did make one minor change to the harbor float reserve to include pylons.
So then the recreation facility reserve, did that go from two hundred?
It was two hundred thousand.
Okay. And now it's two fifty. No.
I, I think it was one fifty and went to two fifty.
Okay. And then Walker Park was the other one that. What was that originally? Was it twenty five thousand and two hundred?
Yes, and the reason, the reason for that was the playground equipment being so.
You know, Eric on the parks committee with Cedar Works, you know, we've sort of been using like a seventy thousand dollar figure, but. Two hundred thousand, is that based on something?
Uh, my understanding was that this was to put, um, ADA accessible equipment at the park.
It's just a lot higher than anything the parks committee's been looking at, even with the, you know, cause we've been putting what twelve fifteen thousand away. Every year for five years to be ready to put in new equipment. But I don't know, the whole ADA question at Walker is such a different question, cause that requires you've got to like rebuild that park. Right? I mean, you can't have the steps going down from the parking lot.
Right, you got up the ramp then.
Yeah. You, you know, I think the main thing. Is that. We were trying to make sure that the reserve, again, didn't change the programming or the policy. Of what the reserve was for, but merely the amount to update for what we expected is the amount. Which, which in today's dollars will be required. So, you know, for, you know, so if it, if it isn't two hundred and it's a hundred. To, but we can still accomplish it all.
But there sooner, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. And again, this doesn't fund it. This really just sets those limits.
So, you know, part of. Part of. You know, a problem that I had with that was we had, and I think it was two hundred thousand. Was the replacement, uh, reserve number on the March Jones field. And, uh, you know, I, what we have is a reserve. That we keep building towards, but nobody's actually looking at the facility. To keep it up to date as we go. I mean, it's almost like we're, we're saving the money so that, you know, eventually when we hit the two thousand, we can rebuild. The whole thing versus doing basic maintenance on it out of the reserve. As we go so that we don't have to have. The two hundred thousand.
So I, I would say that. Until this fall, I'd agree with you. I, I think, we, we, cause we used that money this fall to, that was the seed money for all the work we've done over there. Um, and then we got some, some contributions on top of it, but. That seed money was what we used. The, the, the replacement of the fencing to me is, that's out the window now because we are gonna do exactly that, which is. As it, as it's broken, it's getting fixed.
And, and that's, and that's what has happened. And that's what's happened as we've gone, is that, that there is no. Yearly upkeep of our. Properties, you know. And. You know, we, we don't need to get to that two hundred thousand dollar number to go fix something that costs. Twenty five hundred dollars.
Right, you know. I totally agree. I totally agree. Yeah, no, and, and so that's why I say, so to set up the reserve for this purpose. You know, I don't, I, the fencing to me is a, is a separate, you know, the separate, I look at this as, well, we have to spend. Fifty thousand dollars to, to, to repair or replace, I suppose. The, the surface of each, um, each of the basketball courts and the tennis courts, that's fifty thousand each. Um, that also this re- reserve, uh, you know, as. We talked about that parking area up at the front and trying to clear that out. This is where I would probably suggest we would, um, put money into the budget to, to deal with that parking area. And the moving of the gate. Um, those are, tho- that's how I would, you know, foresee using this sort of money as opposed to. You know, put it aside for, like you said, you know, two hundred thousand dollar replacement someday of the fence. When the fence is broken now, we're fixing the fence now and, and, and then we'll, you know, it's, it, this is the bigger. I'm thinking the bigger ticket, um, issues that, that, um. You know, maybe that are more than just maintenance perhaps, you know, they're, they're kind of. Um, they're capital fixes to the, to the park in that case.
So. I would move that the board approve the updated re- reserve policy as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? All right, I'm yes, Mark.
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next item is to act on committee bylaws for the board of assessment review.
So is this also some, I guess we'll just have a list of stuff we have to sign when we go in.
Yeah, I think actually we just have the two items to sign. Correct? I don't think you need to sign this one.
Yeah, it has a place for us, but.
Oh, it does?
The folder on her desk.
Yeah, just sign whatever's in there, I guess.
You'll have it in, whatever we need, she'll have in there.
You have a piece of candy, you can have a mint, whatever you need to do.
Whatever you need to get through.
I move the board approve the board of assessment review bylaws as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, I'm a yes, Mark.
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion items? Hearing none, uh, we'll go into select board liaison reports. I'll go first. I don't have any to give, so. Um, I think with the holidays and everyone getting back into action, we probably will be light on that, so. I'll turn it over to, uh, anyone else that has an update to give.
I have some, a few, uh, perks, perks Matt, after our last select board meeting, they've done their five year plan. That's been submitted to the town office, so they get a gold star as a committee. And they've updated the memorial bench program, which I was just noticing on the website. We'll need to sort of get all that queued up. Uh, the community garden, thanks to the work John's done and knowing that we've got a little, this area won't be disturbed by the work that's being done at March Jones. So community gardens, I go for this next summer. Uh, and then, um, the Boulder Slope project that, um. Doug's presented to us is, is still moving forward. Other committee, the ordinance review committee is starting to gear up for its, um. It's a session in, in operation to get things ready for the June ballot. We've got some. Um, information from Orion of things that we need to do. Uh, ironically, they, I think, have to meet this week in person for the briefest of times. So they can adopt the remote participation policy, which you just, you can't make this stuff up. Uh, mid coast internet, we've, um, had two board meetings, uh, so we're sort of full up and running. Adam Lackman, who is Senator King's representative, was on our call today, just to follow what we're doing. So that's great to have that kind of attention and. Um, we've got, uh, some big important changes have happened at the, uh, federal level that make it more likely that we can. Get some additional funding. Uh, basically the definition of what is served and unserved. That's the sort of big issue that affects the mid coast area. We're, we're seen as already having internet service. And but those of us who actually have what they call internet service might. Like to disagree. So good stuff's happening with that group, Rockland, Thomaston, Camden. And Rockport are, are really pulling together on this.
And MMA just sent an email out to all of us indicating the, uh, parameters for the use of the money is also expanded.
Right, that is, yeah, it's the US Treasury guidance is, um. It's really, it's helpful on that.
Um, Eric, anything from you?
Um, not really. Cause the. The only thing the harbor committee had met talking about budgets and that's pretty much it, um, nothing from. Midcoast Wastes, we haven't met for a while. But maybe you're supposed to meet in January here.
I have a question on Harbor though, before you go on. I, are the cameras up and running on, for Harbor?
Yeah.
Do we have opportunity to? Like, use those, link those, have people? Use them to observe? What's, have we thought, have we talked about that? I don't know what the strategy is for that.
There was discussed at the last meeting. I think at the moment they're not. Linkable. That's a future event. Yeah, I, I can add a little bit to that. I mean, I, I, cause I had asked, Mark had asked that question, I think at the last meeting. And, and I had said, oh, I think we can get them connected. And then I asked that question of Abby and she said, no, but. There's been some interest in having a separate camera that's more of a. Panoramic view of sorts, um, that's in a different location. So it doesn't appear that these cameras can do that. Because they're more. The way they're situated, they're really more looking for nefarious acts.
Oh.
Um, from time to time, uh, although I will say. And I will say as somebody who, who gets, who, who has the login to them. It's pretty. I mean, I gotta be honest.
Right, well, that, that's what I mean. I mean, I think if, if we should use that as a selling point, right? I mean, people can. It's kind of like when I, when I'm gonna travel south in the summer and I look at the, the traffic cameras for the Whiskasset Bridge. Like, you know, if someone wants to see what's going on in the harbor, it's great. It would be a great opportunity for them to do that.
From our website, yeah.
Right.
So, uh, here's how I look at it. It was, public money was spent to put them up there. And, you know. If, if it's being viewed by. One person or, or fifteen hundred people, it, it makes no difference. I mean. That one person that's looking at it can report to the police when they see.
Right, I was gonna say, maybe, maybe they can catch some things in action.
Call the bottom, call nine one one.
To me, I'm not necessarily sure that, that our harbor master, although I don't know what Abby's, uh. Technical expertise is to say that it can or can't be. You know, hooked up in a fashion that can be viewed. I'm not saying all of the, the cameras need to be, but. Something that, that, uh. It's a, as Michelle had mentioned, a, a selling point to Denise, you know, it said a selling point for our harbor, it's beautiful. And if we can get that hooked up to the website. So that people from wherever can click on it and say, you know. I think I'll sail in there. They've got a good. Right, so.
I agree. If, if we can make it happen, I think we should try and maybe it's not all cameras, maybe it's one camera, maybe it's pointed and I don't know, but. I think we should.
It doesn't have to be everything, just, just a couple, so that somebody, I mean, other places do it. I mean, so. You know, let's, let's make it happen.
Well, the, the committee did discuss that and I believe somebody said they would be willing to donate. Oops. Video. Donate a cameras for that purpose so that it could be pointed to the harbor more. So it would be a panoramic type view, so I don't think the cost is extreme.
Have you, have you seen the cameras, Eric?
I haven't.
Well, we, we have cameras that do just exactly what you're talking. You know, from the harbor master looking out, from the boat club looking up through towards Rockland. I mean, there's some great views that are already there. All we need to do is. Put the wire nut on it. And make it happen.
Yeah, well, I mean, John, wire nut.
Well, if we can figure that out, let's figure it out because I think it would be beneficial for us. And to Mark's point, I mean, we've. Paid for them with taxpayer money and somebody might want to have a view and we should give them that opportunity. Um, all right, Mark, I'm sorry, any, anything from you? Or I'm sorry, Eric, were you finished?
Yeah, pretty much, because the other committees haven't, and ten boards haven't met, so.
Okay. Mark, anything for you?
I've either been working or out of town, no.
Okay. All right, well, that is the last topic on our regular select board. Um, agenda, any final comments? Uh, we will be convening in executive session, but any final, uh, comments for. Our session for this month. All right, can I have a motion to move to executive session?
I move to convening in, in executive session pursuant to one MRS, section four oh five six A to discuss a personnel matter.
We have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Can we have a couple of minutes before we switch right into it?
Yes, we can. Um, all, all right, I'm a yes, Mark.
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Okay. Seven forty nine, uh, Bruce, you can go ahead and disconnect, uh, from the live stream and we'll take a.